... To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, edition under God, individual liberty and justice.
Edition or deletion?
Yes, so we have Bob Murley, which I didn't know if you wanted to be during your regular area in the beginning, and Steve. Steve Shaw.
Our one falls in.
Okay, so they both requested to be on the agenda, and then there's that quote from Countryside that Deb asked you all to review, and those are the two additions. I didn't know, we still had the Egg Street Sewer request on for further unfinished. I don't know if there's any...
I talked to Keith about it, but I haven't quite had time enough to do what much that I need to do.
So you're going to take it off and put it back on, or I don't know.
Well, let's just try, we should try and get it resolved by next meeting, but...
Well, we'll leave it for now and see what we can... But that's all I've got.
What did everybody think about the minutes? I guess the regular board minutes. I guess we should do them first. Where in the minutes portion did you?
What was this about? Anybody know anything about this?
What's that for?
Georgia Vermont New England Municipal President Center, $2,238.91.
Is it in the red folder?
I'm not signed it.
Let's see where it must be at.
Find anything, Mike?
Can get to that one, yeah. It would be under M. What else is next to it as far as on the warrant?
Twenty-two thirty-eight?
What's that?
Twenty-two thirty-eight.
Eight ninety-something.
Ninety-one.
Twenty-six oh thirty-six.
It's New England Municipal Res Center.
It says annual disaster recovery and annual support license.
You know anything about that, Bob?
No. What is it? I wasn't paying attention.
New England Municipal Center, annual disaster recovery seven thirty-four, annual support license fifteen hundred and four sixty-four.
Never heard of it. Is it New England Municipal Resource Center?
Yes.
Very interesting. Just learned that that organization existed two days ago. Completely unrelated to what you're talking about. I have no idea what that's about. But they, I can tell you that they are the ones that handle the software that's out on the computers here.
Nemrick.
So it's probably disaster...
Nemrick.
Yeah, Nemrick. It's probably computer disaster recovery.
I just, I read down through it, and I missed it the first time. Said Nemrick, and it didn't click on me. That was annual disaster recovery agreement. Apparently, we paid so much annual support license amount.
What do they charge? Just curious.
The disaster recovery is $734.27, and the support license is $1,504.64. Guess we can sign it now, that's all. As far as the minutes go, what's everybody's touch around the minutes?
I'll move them.
Bob seconded that. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Carried. We requested. All right, Steve?
Want to sign this?
Nemrick. You can see where it is in there.
Hi, so I know no one wants to spend a lot of time discussing the library and the handicap accessibility, but I wanted to just take a couple of minutes and just point a couple of things out. One of the things I heard a lot during the last couple of weeks was issues like the doorbell on the back of the building doesn't work, that the handicap ramp has a great issue with the very front. That's a rake, and someone goes over and fixes it. That's deferred maintenance. So we should get someone over and just fix that now. But one of the more important things is we should hire a handicap accessibility expert to go into that building in this building and see where we are with regards to ADA today. Now, I spent about an hour today calling around. I spoke to labor and industry, because when I built my studio, it had to be fully handicapped accessible. It was built at the exact same time as that building, so it was built to early 2000 ADA code. I spoke to the commissioner up in Montpelier, and eventually I got ahold of, I printed it out here, Jake Lagavine, who works for the Vermont Center for Independent Living, and they have a handicap accessibility expert who goes around the towns and homes, and basically will do a walkthrough and just say, 2020 handicap accessibility says this. Here's the good that you're doing great on, here's areas that you can improve, and I think that makes a lot of sense. Have someone, and I think they should walk into this building too and look at our doors, because if we're really genuinely concerned about handicapped access for everybody in this community, let's spend, have a little bit of money, have a handicap expert come in, then we have the report, and we know exactly what we're looking at and what we can do and should do. That's just my two cents. And I'm more than happy to send this email, it's got a phone number on it.
Can you share that information with us, please?
I absolutely will, yeah.
Is that somebody we would hire, or is that a state agency that...
You know, that's a good question. The guy who does the report is sick right now, so I couldn't get him on the phone, but he was referred to me through state agencies. It was amazing. Every agency was passing it around. Finally, I got ahold of these people, and they are the one that does it. So it might be a state agency, it might be private, but I think it sounds like a really big deal. He shows up with a modern list and just walks through the building and looks at everything, and then sits down with you and says, here's what I've seen. I think that's money well spent, so...
Well, thank you for looking into that.
Love it.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? Thank you. Announcements.
So the only announcement that I had was that during the organizational meeting, the select board re-adopted the rules of procedure, and those will be available in the town hall. And the only main thing that we changed or kind of just reiterated was the importance of just being mindful of the time that is taken during everybody's opportunity to speak. So there's some more information on there, on just some proposed time limits, and so just for everybody to just be mindful of the time that they're taking is pretty much the main intent behind all of that.
Great, thank you. Zoning administrator, do we have anything from Jonas?
Nothing from Jonas.
Nothing from Jonas, okay. Planning commission, we have something there. Did you draft it? Everybody look through this? There's three or four pages, or I don't know if there's any reason to read it all, but... Tom, would you care to comment on some of the points of the last planning commission meeting, or?
Probably not.
Nothing, okay.
I guess I should. We're still working on, as you can see, that we're still trying to work out the conditions of zoning, and whether they have a conditional use or not, so. Harry wasn't there, and Eric wasn't there. If that's the one you're looking at, the one I spoke about at the last topic of the meeting?
This was the February 24th.
Same as the last topic of the meeting. That's why I guess I said no, Mike, because I don't think there was a meeting since that one.
Nothing's changed. All right, so the one thing, though, you guys get to look around for a new member to fill Eric's position.
I just read that.
Okay. So you'll bring that back to the commission and...
Sure that would be committee.
What you guys can come up with for a candidate, please. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Tom with the planning commission? Good, thank you. To Keith, send any notes. Assessors. Oh, you know, I gotta, we got looking at that other thing, and we never approved the organizational minutes. Kind of jumped the gun. We probably need to approve the organizational minutes, don't we?
Probably couldn't hurt to do that.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Bob seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. I'm clerk's memo. Let's see. Nothing from the assessor. Bob has five fleet permits. Liquor license, and outdoor consumption permit for Pub Station Restaurant. Do you want to make a motion that we sign the liquor license and outdoor consumption permit? Outdoor consumption just to do on air.
Just for...
Front porch, or? I don't know if they, is that the same one that they can go cater? It's a catering one when they go catering. I think that's still a different...
Do they cater?
No, I'm just saying that if somebody, like the barn will sometimes get one for catering.
I think that's a different...
It's called catering.
Yeah.
Who's that one for?
The station.
The station.
I didn't hear it. Did someone make a motion?
Not yet.
Yeah, Tom makes that motion.
Any second?
I'll second.
For both, for both of them, right?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Carried. Certificate of vote for town meeting.
What's that?
We have a certificate of vote for the town meeting.
Where do you want this to go?
That just was in Deb's memo.
Oh, we each got one.
Oh, you each got mine.
Countryside alarm. So this is...
I'll speak to this.
Excellent.
I asked Deb, what did she request the quote for, and she couldn't remember. So I said, how can we approve something when we don't even know?
Right.
So she's going to check into it some more. Apparently, during these discussions was at a time before the election when she was overwhelmed, or that day, or whatever.
Aren't those the items that are quoted?
But it doesn't say what it's for, what it's...
The way I read it right there, it looks like just burglar alarm.
That's what I thought, and I thought she was requesting from us something more than that.
I thought we were looking to put cameras in so we could...
That's what I thought.
Bill, you have a comment, please, or?
I think they should look at inexpensive camera systems, at least in the common areas, because an alarm system is great, but if we want to arrest somebody, cameras are, you can't...
Right.
By the time an alarm goes off and somebody gets here, it's quite a long ways away from anybody. Middle of the night, maybe, but during the day, and they get, I would say an alarm, I would go with a panic button for each of the offices, maybe, any side, something you have something that you panic. Somebody hit this way. And the cameras would be great. They're not that expensive. I know we have at our station, the ferry, we have one outside, and we have a couple of ferries inside, and they report on motion, so not recording all the time. And then you can do sound or no sound if you choose to. You could do even without sound. If somebody walks by the camera, looks up, and it's probably a worthwhile investment to move towards the future, to protect your staff and protect your facility.
Right, because, I mean, you want some kind of reference of everybody that's coming through the doors, because the burglar alarms are fine, but if you're open, you really need that reference of who's in and out all of day long. That's what I would say. Can you, can you share that with Deb?
Okay.
Expand this into some type of motion activated cameras?
Okay.
As, as options, too, so that we can see what everything is.
Should we look at others other than Countryside, like say Tyler, who comes in and does workforce now and then?
It seems to me like it would be a good idea to have a couple of quotes.
If you just figure out what you want, put on an RFP on it, which makes you best conform your vision on what you're looking for. What did you guys go with? Round hill, round fence, I believe, I don't think they're out there, but this was, we've got ours for probably nine years now, and they still work outstanding.
I guess unless she picked Countryside, because... They've done some hard dating somewhere.
You can have the library, don't think...
That's what I have here.
Fire departments to, for the fire alarm system, smoke.
I guess if we could come up with a, with what she's gonna, with just a list of what she's going to ask them, then we can ask Tylers to come in and do the same, and that would give us a, everybody has the same rulebook.
But if Countryside has everything else in town, it might be wise to keep it all in one.
Right, but it doesn't hurt to have the...
Oh, no, get another price out.
Have the two numbers.
Exactly, have the two of them.
Have the two numbers.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so Keith is out of town. I've been asked to sign the time cards. About the only thing I see is that the overtime hours on all three employees are totally different on all three cards.
All three different numbers total?
Three different overtime times. So apparently, they don't all have to take as long to do their routes unless...
Are they, according to the time card, are they, are they all overtime for the same day?
It's for a week, it's just general, it's overall time throughout an entire week.
Right, but somewhere along the line, something must be different.
We should be able to look at the, where they punched.
I assume they're all different routes.
They'll have to start at a different time to accomplish what they need to accomplish.
You are just making sure I have it in my Deb pile.
Now, they don't all appear to be the same days. And I would say the one question would be the last one. Just look at the name on top. See what I'm talking about.
I did just get something from Jonas, FYI.
I've already signed it, so I can put it in order after me.
Let's see what's your...
Somewhere in there, there's some letters from the Wexler, she said, please see the envelopes clipped together.
I also have one other thing from Deb related to the Countryside, before we move along from that.
Some letters clipped together in here.
Julie has college letters clipped together.
That's probably, yeah.
Should we wait until we get to the treasurer's memo?
Yeah.
So we're staying on, stay organized? I've got a couple of things from her that you might be looking for. The only other thing regarding the Countryside thing is that, there were in that email from Deb, I just didn't want us to miss out on it. She had mentioned that it might be of benefit to, um, this, I think a memo from the Secretary of State's office recommended that the, that select boards authorize town clerks to be able to call law enforcement and to cover different meetings or events without authorization, just as general things. I don't know if that's, that was just another item that was kind of locked in, so I don't know if that's...
That's a secondary item, okay.
But it was in that same communication strand with all of that.
Any note needed? No? Yes? No?
So we're doing good with the treasurer?
It's our tax dollars.
Well, just that last thing that I just said about, I don't know, while we have...
Do we want to make a motion so that if Deb feels that there's something like the last time, like at the town meeting, something comes up like that, that she doesn't have to get the authority from us, she can just call and...
I'm okay with that.
Seems reasonable, but I mean, something...
What has your experience been, Bill?
I would have been here the other day, but when I talked to Deb the other night I would have been here the other day, but when I talked to Dad the other night about, heard what happened, second officer, it was kind of a last minute. You know, what do we do, and I said, if you have to pay it, I'll, to cover it, because I couldn't be here that night. Maybe put a cap on it, like how many hours? You know, if it's a three hour, four hour minimum, like with the sheriffs, it was a four hour, we thought it would be four hours.
Yeah. He only charged us for two, so.
They thought, they were, they thought it would be four, but they must have only been here two hours, which is good. That was a last minute, because they were stretched all through the county. They literally had to get the guy for you off court to tell him you're working down here. So I think it's probably a good thing to have, you know, or maybe have a liaison among the select board members that we can reach out to and say, we can't, you know, if it's not, rely on Deb, but there's one select member, two to call and, you know.
If she has the permission, she's gonna talk to somebody, she's gonna have communications with somebody, she had communications with me about that anyways. And I said, we need, you know, we need to with, in lieu of, you know, the stories, you can't, you can't not, so. I guess it would be a good idea to have, yeah, and I'm sure she'll, she'll reach out to somebody before she just goes ahead and does it on her own, but I think it would be a good idea to give her the authority to, to do that.
You guys have a dollar amount that you can, like, sign a PO for?
Yeah, probably, that makes sense, cap it, like a.
I know, like, very high, can spend up to $200 without having the town manager or chairman of select board sign off with me. It's a cap, you know, so if you know approximately, it's $50 down for four hours, you're in that $200 window, I don't know what you guys do. I don't think she's gonna go crazy and spend it, but. So checks and balances, will you guys?
This would be better if there was, like a, like a limit.
You can always, I don't think it has to be.
Doesn't have to be set right now, but if we don't set it. Just, we could throw something crazy like up to $500 out there, just, just so that we.
That's true.
So that we didn't get into anything ridiculous.
I mean, there was one, well, the constable, that time when the last 10, 2016 election, Dave was here the whole day.
Yeah. That comes out of our normal.
That's a normal budget.
This would be over and above.
Do you make that motion, John?
Yes.
Somebody wants to second that?
I'll second that.
People fighting over this.
Motion is to authorize the town clerk in consultation with select board chair, is it?
Sure.
To request. What's the right word?
What's?
Outside law enforcement? Yes, or additional.
Additional, additional law enforcement to attend a town apol at the public meeting. Up to.
$500, yeah.
To $500.
Okay, now that he's $500, just, nothing.
Dinner for four.
Yeah.
Did someone second that? I didn't catch it. Unanimous.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Okay. You sign these?
Yeah.
Thank you. And now I think we're done with the town clerks now.
The warrants, everybody's looked at the warrants, somebody wanna make a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried. Forty-one checks, twenty-eight accounts payable, and thirteen payroll. Please review the Rutland Herald bill, the library has requested that this bill be paid out of general fund. Didn't we decide at the last meeting that that was for the morning for that project? Two hundred fifteen seventeen a pop. Anybody have any opinion on that, other than the fact that last meeting, when it came up, we decided that we'd pay it? We felt it should come out of the library budget, because it was their project? Any comment on that?
I agree.
John?
No, I don't know, you know, what other setups are in their budget and are in ours, like. I don't have any guidance that way.
I'm just saying, you know, we all kind of felt that that was, that the project went with the library, it should come out of the library budget, so.
But it was a town, a town warning.
For a town vote.
For a town vote.
So.
I move we pay it.
You move we pay it. Somebody wants to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Yes.
One yet, one no? Carried. Tax warrant for Rutland County is here for review. Be paid in July and November.
Did you really second that?
Yeah.
Are we still on the clerk?
We're still on treasurer's memo. Do, do you have something for the clerk that we, I screwed it over?
No. I just, uh, my hearing needs to be sent to California, but I'm going to Tennessee, I'm gonna wait till I get back.
Okay, that's the tune in?
It's a pain in the freaking ass.
There's a tax rate, okay. Um, letters from, in regard to a sewer, how many? Just paid for Wexler.
That wasn't in our.
No, that's.
Not yet.
That's what I, what was it?
July and November.
July, November, okay. Right there, back the corner. July, November.
Okay, but why isn't it saying March 2020?
Just be delivered by then or whatever.
Is she still?
The heat is on still in the.
No, this one is.
The heat is on, I just don't wanna, that's all right. I'm gonna be letting all the heat pour out.
I don't know, maybe these guys.
What's that?
Dennis Morrison.
Dennis Morrison, that was the guy you guys beat?
Yes, I know Dennis.
This goes where?
No, that's a separate one, it's three different sewer situations.
Right, okay.
We'll have to make sure they stay.
Together?
Together.
So this one here, he said, this one here in Euclid Street, apartments B and C were joined creating a single residence. That one there, we have.
Through.
Rick Wardy's. On Euclid Street. So, the one that we had, we did change the one in Spooch Gum there, when they took the two apartments out. And switched that to a, a single resident, we, after an inspection from the zoning administrator that proved that those two apartments had now been decommissioned, so to speak. So we did switch that, but as far as, so this one on Euclid Street could be, could be open to that, but as far as the other one, the one, the property that Dennis Morrison has, it is a resident, it is an industrial area, and it could be used as a building, and there's no, it doesn't call out for whether there's already water or anything like that in our sewer ordinance. It's a building within, within, in the, you know, that could be used for any of those circumstances. So, I mean, they've been, for almost forty years, people have paid the sewer bill on all these properties. So, I mean, it's, it's no different than a tax bill, you, when you take ownership of the property, you know, or it's your responsibility to know what, what goes along with that. And, and all those buildings throughout the whole town have all been subject to a sewer users fee. And I feel that that's, that's something that needs to be, because, I mean, it wouldn't be a big deal to, to make that building into, uh, I mean, it has the potential to be, by having the sewer available, it, it makes it worth a lot more. It adds a lot of value. Because the building would have to be demolished, every, the whole village would have to be demolished. Because there's no way to put any kind of septic system in, anywhere in the village, so.
Now, the other one, the Euclid Street one, Gaissels, they, they reduce the number of apartments, but is, is the sewer fee based on how many bathrooms you have?
It was, it was based on, on that, Gaissels was based on three, because there was two single apartments in the back of that house.
And they each had facilities.
Right, and they, there was two single, single bedroom apartments in the back of that house and the main house, so that was three hookups they charged, they were charged for.
Right, I can remember that, I was on the board at that time.
Right.
But in this situation, if you have two apartments that become one, but there's still two bathrooms, do two bathrooms get charged or not?
Just one, one hookup.
Just one hookup.
One family, a single family dwelling.
Okay.
That's how the.
So do we need to instruct Jonas to check that out, or?
That would be, that would be our next, the zoning administrator has to go and, and be satisfied that it's, that it's truly made into one single family apartment, so.
Is the timing critical for as of April first, or, or is it as of the tax?
I guess, I guess. Well, the thing is, he says on December first, departments were joined, but this is the first that we knew of it. So until we got this letter, we can't, we don't know that that's in fact incorrect, so. Tenant's lease attached as verification of charges.
I don't, I don't think it's prorated or. If it should be corrected or changed.
So I guess that would be, the next thing would be to pass this to Jonas and. And the other one is, is basically just an explanation of that little, that little building that was in question. And Keith took a picture of the map, but it, it wasn't as clear as we were looking for, and sent it to me. And he said it, he still needs to look a little harder and see if there's, there's some way where we can accurately determine which, it shows the line across, but it doesn't really show the, the actual connection.
Do you want me to take it to Jonas tomorrow? This is the one.
Just the one?
The one.
Julie just said that, that these folks should receive communication from the board, so I don't know.
It's an individual chief, or?
Well, you could tell, well, we haven't made a motion yet.
That's what the sewer map is right there, that's the building in question.
Right there.
There's the, the line is right there, but I don't know about the Ts, but all these buildings, I mean, the folks out there, they have four, has a four apartment in it. Between the folks office and us, I don't see exactly where it hooks into the T. There must be another map that I'll have to get a hold of. So that was a map that Keith sent, and passed it down to John.
This is the little building.
There's.
That's the little building right there, yeah.
No, it's, that wasn't.
It doesn't show any sewer lines.
Show exactly where the Ts are, so I gotta, we gotta get a better, a better.
So what it, it appears like at the closing, or I assume between Jeremy Ward and Sergeane.
They just paid the tax with time to sewer, because they had to to get it to close.
Right. Even though we had debated them.
Right, for that session.
For last year.
Okay. That's interesting. That's a tax.
I hope you pay for this year.
Is that for this year?
Or was that, was, yeah. Because I ran into her after the meeting and she asked, you know, about what was discussed and I, I had said, because that's what was the concern, was about what to do for their closing because they were gonna have to pay taxes and I was under the impression that they had been abated and she said that was for last year, not for this year, which is what they had to pay.
So what correspondence do we need?
I don't think we have any.
I'm, I don't know. I'm confused on what.
As far as, as far as that one goes, I don't think there's any.
I'm just saying, just Julie mentioned that all three of these folks should have communication from the board, so I don't know.
They're not requesting any. It's from the town treasurer saying enclosed, please find the payment.
Right, and I would say that that's for that stretch from when they abated to the current tax bill.
So I can go back to Julie.
Dennis?
This one, can, can you reply to Dennis?
Saying that he still owes his...
Yeah, that, that, you know, due to the, the regulations, the sewer, the sewer regulate ordinance, it, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that if you're within a hundred and fifty feet, I guess, if, if there's the potential, there's the potential for any of those circumstances and, and the sewer ordinance is available right on the website.
And this Euclid Street, I'll discuss with Jonas.
Jonas, please. That's on. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So we're good with those. I'm ready to see management.
This is the time of the year where we put together the, or update the annual update for the local emergency management plan. We had a lot of revisions last year because it came out with a new template. This year, the revisions will just be updates to telephone numbers and people who changed positions, for instance. But one of the things that has come up infirmly is continue continuity of operations plan. This is nothing new. The state would like to see all the towns have a continuity of operations plan as part of their local emergency management plan. I've sort of avoided it because it, I put it on the back burner, put it that way. But because of this coronavirus scare, I would say, there's a, there's a, there's a big movement to get towns to put together a continuity of operations plan. So the state has, has this, Vermont Emergency Management has come up with a template, which I have, and I'm suggesting that we put together this continuity of operations plan and it would be attached to the local emergency management plan. So the continuity of operations plan, what it, the way it's set up is mission essential functions, and they have three levels. Functions that must be performed given one day disruption, functions that must be performed given one day to one week disruption, and functions that must be performed given a one week to one month disruption. I think for a town of Polit size, we only really need to worry about the one week to one month and probably more up to the one month disruption. For example, the town clerk was out sick for a week. It's not gonna stop things from happening. The town clerk was out for a full month, or six weeks, or two months, could be a different matter. Same for the treasurer. Okay, so what the continuity of operations plan does is it spells out what you're going to do in those situations. So both of them have assistants, so an assistant can take over, right? If the assistants were not available, what would you do next? In the case of, of the treasurer, you know, we could put down, well, we could ask Judy Coolidge to step in for a certain period of time. I asked Julie Mack and I talked to everyone here in the office. I said, Julie, if you couldn't get anybody, what would you do? And she would go to, or we would go to the organization, the, it's the clerk, it's the Vermont Clerk and Treasurer Association, and they might be able to put somebody in place to help us get through that time period. So all this would be spelled out in the continuity of operations plan. For instance, in the case of the select board, if three of you were out and incapacitated for any reason, you wouldn't have a quorum, right? How are you gonna sign warrants? How are you gonna sign, how are you gonna sign checks? And I called Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns and there's actually a state statute in the event of, there are so many vacancies in the select board that a quorum cannot be achieved. The remaining select person or select persons shall be authorized to draw orders for payment of continuing obligations and necessary expenses until the vacancies are filled pursuant to Section 963. So there are ability, you have the ability to do these things, but we need to spell it out in the continuity of operations plan. I spoke to Keith, for instance. I said, Keith, let's say all three of you got sick and were incapacitated and we have a snowstorm coming. What would you do? How would you handle that? You have nobody to, and his answer was, well, we'd have to get contractors. We would pull contractors in. He said, I know who contractors are. We would pull them in and we'd have to get private contractors to plow the roads. It was a good answer and it's a, it's a good thing to put in writing. We don't need to, you know, the details of how he does that. We just need to know that we have a plan if something like that happens. So I'll put it together, not gonna be very complicated. It'll just spell out the things that we would do in the event that we have that kind of situation and it'll be attached as an appendix to the emergency operations plan for the town.
Is there a timeframe on that, Robert?
Of getting it together? Well, the, the local emergency management plan is due May 1st. So I'll, I'll get this done before that time. And I'll be back here to get the signature, and it really now only requires your signature, Mike, for the local emergency management plan. And I'll do that, I'll come back on April 21st to get that signature and go over this continued, continuity of operations plan, explain to you what I put down in there and so you understand what you're signing and that should be, that should complete it.
April 21st, you said?
21st. If you can put me down for, and you could just put the local emergency management plan, L E M, L E M P plan approval. And by the way, Mike, I put you, they ask you in here for a team, planning team, I put myself, Keith Mason, and you. And the template is written, risk assessments, what are the hazards that we have in town? We have really weather-related hazards, the major hazard we have. I threw in now pandemic. Probability of weather-related is high, pandemic low. Risk score, this is sort of a guess, probability for weather-related, right now I have fifty percent. Probably should be higher than that based on the last few years. Pandemic, I put five percent, you know, I mean, it's probably less than that in, in terms of time periods, right? So that's, that's the kind of information that's included in here. I don't know if you have any questions?
Sounds like you have a good direction on that.
Yeah, with the help of the, the staff here, you know, everybody had good answers, so.
Does it, is Julie the only signature that's on, can be on the checks?
No, she told me that if she signs it and one of, any one of you, you sign.
Yes, but I mean, if she's unavailable.
Can two of us sign it?
I believe two of us can.
Two of us, okay.
Oh, two of you can sign it if she's not available. Yeah, right. I think she told me that. And the other thing is, the, the records, you know, will have spelled out who has the combination to get into the records. Okay, so if Deb and let's say Sue are out ill and people have to get into the records, who has the ability to open up that safe so people could continue to do their research, real estate agents or whatever, on the records? So that's the, the whole purpose of the continuity of operations. Something happens like a, a virus like that, how do you keep the, the town moving? How do you keep it going? How do you keep things operating? And that's the plan that's supposed to spell out.
Any other questions for Bob?
Did you talk about, well, let me ask you. On your health officer hat, I saw a email that you sent in regards to people having a collection of unregistered whatever. Yeah, you, you sent that to someone else to act on?
Yeah, that, that actually doesn't fall under the health officer. It mentions in our training, it's been mentioned to us what to do in those cases and that is to, to refer to the Agency of Natural Resource, sorry, Department of Environmental Conservation. And I spoke to the gentleman who handles that and he put it on his list of things to do and he'll be making a visit there if he hasn't already. And you, you can only have no more than three unregistered vehicles on your property. Anything more than that, it falls under, under the state's, it's not a, it's not a junkyard. I can't remember what they call it, but it's, it's a law. If you have more than...
Salvage, salvage yard, probably.
Salvage yard. I can't remember what the name is. Let's say salvage yard. If you have more than three vehicles, unregistered, sitting there, it's considered a salvage yard and you have a whole bunch of regulations you have to follow. So either you follow all those regulations or you pull cars out. You have to pull vehicles out, cars or trucks, any, any motor vehicle. So he was, he, I explained to him the situation and he was going to enforce that. So I don't know what, it's sort of out of my hands. It's in his hands. I could, I can give you his number and you could follow, you know, the board can follow up with him. It's, it's a state agency, state person that does it.
Well, if you contacted him, wouldn't he get back to you?
I didn't ask him to and I don't know whether he will get back to me to, 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 to me, it's, it's a black and white issue. I mean, there's clearly more than three vehicles there that are unregistered and clearly he's gonna have to move them out. I don't think he's gonna ask, ask to be a salvage yard. I don't know that it could be, it is zoned for a salvage yard over here. So I, I, he, he's not gonna have much of a choice. Sooner or later, the cars will have to be removed. You know, if, if they're still there in three or four months, then I'd be happy to make a phone call again and ask him how it's going, but I actually have no authority over that. I'd be just doing it as a favor for the town. The select board calls and that's a completely different matter. You have, you have the, or, or the zoning administrator. It's more of a zoning administrator, a, 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 a subject than it is a, it's not really a, a health issue.
Thanks.
Do you have anything as far as a health officer or?
No, I'm working with, one other thing is working with the 239 Route 133. Was Ron Waite's house, there's some garbage on the side. There was a lot of stuff in the yard. But there's some garbage on the side that one of the residents over there is complaining about rats. And I took a while, but I finally got ahold of the company that's handling the building for the bank. I have spoke to somebody there. They said that they would, you know, get somebody over there. Haven't seen anything happen, so I'll make another phone call this week. And if I don't get any movement on it, then I may come back to you for a health order. I may have to just issue a health order and send it to the bank and to the company that runs it and have them get that stuff out of there. There's a lot of other stuff there I have no control over that, you know, can't get that, that stuff. But whereas there's garbage, where, where it's attracting rodents, then that's something the health officer can enforce.
Any other questions for Bob?
I am up at the cemetery to see whether Skippy's grave is spinning.
I know. I was thinking that. Oh, golly.
I don't know who you're talking about.
The lady who owned that house years ago. She was so tidy.
Bonnie, was her name?
Before Bonnie.
Bonnie was Ron Senior's deceased wife.
Waste water treatment facility. I gave you a letter from Wayne Graham of Rural Water that supported that decision. Could you bring that up and just kind of?
So, you want me to read it?
Please.
So from Wayne Graham, Vermont Rural Water. Hi, Mike. I think that this feasibility study is a good idea. You will be in good hands with Jenny and Hoyle Tanner. I had a good visit with your operation, with your operators Jill and Cyrus earlier this week. You have some good folks working for you that really care about the plant. I included some thoughts below on sledge storage tank design and shared those with VTOMs. Below are my thoughts on sledge holding tank. Include piping to make septic and EQ tanks easier to pump out or a mixer for agitating tanks to get scum and sludge into suspension. Chemical addition line to the sledge holding tank. Decant capabilities from storage tank. Possibility of scum pumping from clarifiers to storage tank. Not sure if this could be done. If not, then maybe purchase through project self-priming pump to remove floating sludge scum. Sledge holding needs a sloped bottom with sump and suction line at bottom of sump for draining and cleaning. I see too many flat bottom tanks. I feel like that was just like a la, la, la.
I don't know why I asked you to read it.
How much wood could a woodchuck chuck if a woodchuck?
There's several different issues there, but it, it's good to know that, that they're, that they're in agreement with the direction that, that we're headed, I, I feel, so. I'll sign the paperwork that we voted on a couple of months ago, a month ago and get that ball rolling.
And Jill had sent Mike and I the February 2020 report, which I can share that as well. So here's the VTOMs operations update for the Polit Waste Water Treatment Facility for February 2020. In addition, the submissions for the February DMR submitted today are attached for your use. Future priorities for the select board to sign the feasibility study agreement if we wish to move ahead, which is what you just discussed. Continued, continued pumping issues at Spruce Gum Pump Station Pump Number One, which is not working, to be figured out. Next sledge pumping approximately March 2020, 16,000 gallons from second set of septic tanks. Recommend jetting of collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. And recommend vac, vacuum and pressure washing. Clean out of basement tankage to remove many years of organic loadings from influent structure through septic tanks. Openings and aeration basins to prevent future heavy loadings and clogs.
And here we go.
Let us know if you have any questions.
I have a question for you. This goes back to this continuity of operations. I learned from Keith that, that we have a contractor that, that's doing the tests there at the Waste Water Treatment.
VTOMs?
And that's Vermont U- And that's Vermont UMS is what I have that right?
Vermont Utility Management Systems.
Vermont UMS, yeah.
And I'll put them in the, the, the name of the company. So whoever's doing it, obviously if they got sick, the company would supply somebody else.
Right. Jill and her husband Cyrus own the company and they have people down here with two or three options.
Yeah. Great. That's, I just want to make sure I have it right.
Would you like to hear from Jonas?
Sure.
He's at a Castleton Planning Commission meeting tonight, so he will not make it. He has about four zoning permit applications outstanding, meaning that he's waiting for them to be filled out and returned. He's also working to amend the existing zoning permit application to provide more information from the applicant to avoid interpretation issues. And I wrote him back saying thank you and letting him know that to expect a visit tomorrow about the wastewater.
A wastewater situation.
Good. Older unfinished business?
Uh, it seems like you...
It looks like the Egg Street Sewer Request is, is gone because those people no longer own the building.
Right.
Bob?
There's the, you know where Kim Gashell lives? Across the street, there's a mobile home.
Right.
And what's, I'm asking this from a health officer's point of view. What's the status of that property now? Is it, has it?
Did that one go to tax sale?
It went to tax sale. The town bought it. It's in that year, year-long process. It's still owned by the people in Colorado or...
Montana, I think he has.
Or Montana.
Really Hersham, right?
Yeah, Hersham, yeah. It's owned by Hersham. Okay, so it's in that year thing and then after a year's up?
It was last fall, yes. Is that the, when somebody's still living there?
Is the tenant still in there?
Yes.
That's what I heard, this ranch.
Somebody's in there.
Yeah, and they're not supposed to be during the...
They got like two horses in, in an area no bigger than this, right?
The horses are gone, that, the guy...
The horses are gone?
The guy that was living there with the horses, he's out.
Okay.
Somebody else moved in.
All right.
See, that's why it's only for us.
Well, not really.
Not yet.
We don't, we don't, we don't assume ownership of that till the one year is up.
Oh, okay.
I believe that's the way that, that works. It's not ours, it's not ours for you.
Ask Mike Wade when he tried to buy the old house on the corner there. He ended up getting with her debts too, didn't he? Her gambling debts.
So...
Oh, no.
Yeah, come, uh, I don't know, you probably want to look into notifying the people that are there that, you know, they'll need to move out by the time you own it.
You need to have that, everything in order so that when we take ownership, they got it.
There's nobody there, yeah. I don't know how, the banks do this all the time and I don't know what mechanism is.
Should we contact Kevin or Merrill?
He's in the farm, wasn't he?
About that.
Yeah, we would have to... We'd probably contact Merrill and have to...
I don't know, because Kevin was the one who...
Kevin handles the tax sale.
Tax sale.
But Merrill does all our legal.
Can you con, since, are you the only person that we should have?
Because it, when it falls, once you own it, you're a landlord.
Sure.
Do you know what day?
I'll have to do the bones right.
I'll have to do a parental housing.
That plant, so that we can have a timeline for when we'll need to act or just, just, just start, just start the quest, ask the question.
Right, I don't remember that date. We could find out easily tomorrow.
Well, I can guarantee you also that if anything happens, our name will certainly be on it.
I think it'd be good to refresh our responsibility.
So...
I'll, I'll contact Julie tomorrow.
So we own it.
Right.
We have to wait a year.
Right, they have one year.
God forbid.
They, now, we don't own it. They have one year to pay the taxes, otherwise we take over it.
So are they supposed to be carrying insurance on that until such time?
I think all that part is really, really vague from what I understand the last time. The last time when we had stocks property.
As I understand it, there's not, it's supposed to be vacant for that year, period. I'm pretty sure that...
When we had that other property, that, that girl owned it and ended up buying it from us.
Well, I mean, we can...
It was going to turn in, it was going to turn into a problem to, to get rid of it. To get, take her out and everything.
I think it'd be good to...
Just, okay.
She could, she could give us a statement of our responsibilities.
Someone had called me because they said that, they called me as a health officer. They, they were concerned because she was putting in a wood burning stove in there. And I said, well, there's nothing I can do about that. The, the, the landowner or the owner of the building, the landlord, if you will, would have to call me and, and before I could do anything. And I said, there's nothing I can do unless the landlord or the tenant. Nothing I can do.
I knew there was smoke coming out of the mobile home, so that's why I asked who's carrying the insurance.
Boy, oh boy.
Anything else? Monica?
Oh, are we doing old business? Just update on old, old business. Yeah. I'd, I'd like to update, um, we're having a lot of success of working with the Historical Society Monument and I just wanted to give you some good updates that we have a 3D model, life-size model of the monument and we have the historian coming in. And that was for, you know, no expense. And we're having a historian come in sometime in April to give a presentation, a little exhibition, so we can get a lot of town excitement and so forth. So that's where we are now and at the same time I mentioned about infrastructure, about the town green with the telephone poles and, you know, we have a lot of wires and whatever in the downtown here. And I looked in a little research, what could we do about it? You know, burying those poles? And I talked to Ed, the Rattlin Regional Planner.
Ed Both?
Yeah. And he said, uh, you know, it's, it's a big project, but we most likely have money to do a study to see what it would cost. So maybe the town could look into, um, something like that to do a study of how much it would cost to take down two poles underground or several of the poles in town. And we're getting a lot of traffic here and it looks like Max is going to open up maybe in May and have track, parking here for the diner and everything. It's always kind of busy downtown and I think it would beautify the town, especially if we could, when we get the monument in. And that would, you know, but it's something to think about down the road. Talked to Ed, what's his last name?
Both.
Both, yeah. And see if there is some money to do a study of that and, and go forward on it.
Thank you. We appreciate your update on that.
Yeah. Oh, I have, oh, sorry, I have one question. Um, we've identified eight gravesites. You know, part of the monument, we're going to honor the veterans of the Revolutionary War. We have about eight gravesites here. One up at Summerterry Hill, one at Blossom and one up over the west, the other one near Middle East School.
That's supportive.
Yeah. So that's, that's very exciting. We, you know, we have information on those veterans. But the one on Blossom, does the town have access to that cemetery? I was up there the other day and the only access is, you know, it, it looks like an abandoned property, you know, with a barn in the back after the medical center.
Yeah.
There is a roadway going up, not roadway, but a path going up. And you have to access it up on the hill. Does the town own that property or how does one get into there?
I think, I, I think I can double check, but I think the pro, the cemetery technically belongs to Deer Flats Farm now. I think that when they purchased the Covino open land for, for corn and fields and all that, I think the cemetery came with it, although the town, I, I think only because it was a part of it. But what the town did, um, at one time pay Chad Woodruff annually and to...
Maintain it.
To mow it and maintain it just to, to keep it.
But I don't know how the right of way is to get to it.
But I don't know how, yeah, correct.
That was a loop driveway on Covinos.
Right, but...
But it, so I recall when you used to drive out past the barn to that cemetery, it was just kind of a diagonal.
Yeah, you just faded out through.
True, but is there anything in, that allows for people to just drive out through there?
When Hazel was there, she was fine with it, but...
Right now you can, you know, just get a car up there, go to the gate and go around.
But they did, there's a little plateau behind the barn that stayed with the, the house and barn, but all the fields all the way around, including, I believe, DeCulot commented that he thinks he owns the cemetery, came, got thrown in with the deal of the, of the acreage, so, but it's, the town had maintained it for years. Just like there's a, there's one down in Nelsonville, right across from the Nelsonville School that Roger Thule has cut the grass on for 40 years or so that that, you know, that, that cemetery, the town pays him to, to keep the grass down, only to mow it a couple times a year.
Yeah, so it's nicely kept, I mean, it's moved down, but it's the access.
Right, right, so we need to look into that.
Yeah.
It wasn't an issue because the, the young fellow that lived out in front, just went back and mowed it, but I don't know about for anybody to visit it, that we would need to maintain a right of way to it.
Bob?
I have a question regarding the power poles here you mentioned. Why, why wouldn't you ask Green Mountain Power to give you an estimate? They're the ones that own the lines. They're the ones that would bury the lines. And I would think that, you know, they could just, it wouldn't cost you anything, I wouldn't think.
Well, and both said the same thing, it probably wouldn't cost anything to do a study.
Oh, they, Rattlin Regional Planner, do the study?
Yeah, they would do, they would do the study for, at no cost.
Oh, I thought they were going to...
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be interesting to look into.
Well, if Green Mountain Power would bury them on their own, you wouldn't need a study.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah. But they'll charge you for it.
Yeah, well, you're going to pay sooner, you're going to pay sooner or later.
Yeah, yeah.
There's some complicated drainage pipes over there though too, that I know we had to avoid when we put the town hall sign up.
Hey, what do we got for new business?
I don't think so.
Public comment. Anybody have anything they'd like to comment tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no. What are we doing about Estelle's letter?
Oh, I already, we were, I responded.
You sent it to her?
Yeah, she sent a letter to me. I looked it over and we sent it to her, answering her, her questions and just get all the information from, from Julie anyways.
Yeah, we talked about it at the organizational meeting. We missed you there.
I didn't miss you.
Come on, Chuck.
That's why I wasn't here. And I still got nominated.
That's good.
But yeah.
We, we, we saw a skill there, a skill set that we, that was deserved, so we put it where it belonged.
We almost put everything out there. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So can we adjourn now?
Yes.
There's a motion.
I can, I can.